I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's November 1st, 2022 city council meeting. I'd also like to ask that everyone please silence, all electronic devices. At this time, we'll call on Mayor Protem Harold Owen for tonight's invocation.
Let's play, please. Dear Heavenly Father, defend their cause, O God, through this governing body tonight. We pray for wisdom, for strength, for courage, to do what is right and good for all of our citizens. May we put the interests of others above our own. May we act with love for the common good of all whom we serve in this capacity. Be with our staff as they perform their important duties throughout the city with all of our citizens. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the presentation to city council from Alamance Junior Tennis Foundation concerning tennis center donation. At this time, I'd recognize David Durham, Vice President of the Alamance Junior Tennis Foundation. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, fellow council members and community. My name is David Durham. I serve as the Vice President for the Alamance Junior Tennis Foundation. On behalf of my fellow board members, I want to thank the Burlington City Council for this opportunity this evening. For individuals who may be unfamiliar with the Alamance Junior Tennis Foundation, we are a group of dedicated individuals, teachers, parents, that seek to grow tennis in Alamance County. AJTF was founded in 1986 by a group of private investors and business individuals, including Jim Powell, Jim Tony, F.D. Hornaday, Tom Perham, and Willie Williamson, who desire to grow tennis in Alamance County. Through expanded fundraising and charitable donations, the AJTF has grown to be able to support tennis programs at each of the public high schools in Alamance County, a first-of-its-kind middle school tennis program that's reached 150 junior tennis players each season, a scholarship fund to assist players with equipment, lessons, and camps, and an organization that sponsors tennis tournaments throughout the years to spread the love of the game. In 1995, a group of these same enthusiasts from AJTF desired it was time for a new tennis facility to be built at the city of Burlington. Led by Jim Tony, a professor at Elon, businessman F.D. Hornaday, Tom Perham, the Elon University tennis coach, the AJTF partnered with the Burlington Parks and Recreation to help make this new tennis facility happen. Guided by Harold Owen, director of the Burlington Parks and Recreation at that time, a plan for a six-court facility was drawn, similar to the Jimmy Powell Center in Elon. However, AJTF member Jim Tony recognized that six wasn't enough. He desired 12 courts, one that would be able to host the North Carolina High School Athletic Association, to take place at this new facility. The economic impact of these events of bringing tennis players into Alamance County, along with the growth of just junior tennis in our area, would be great for the city as well as an economic boom for tennis in general. Tony wanted a bigger and better tennis facility, and that's what we've got. The partnership between AJTF and the Burlington Parks and Recreation Department was solidified. A 12-court facility was decided on, and the rest, as we say, is history. Harold Owen hired Coach John Walton, who was one of the greatest hires in our county, to run the Burlington Tennis Center for many years. John Walton served as the president of AJTF for over 20 years. Coach John Walton passed on his legacy to Randy Scott, who now runs the Burlington Tennis Center and serves on the AJTF board. That's all to say this, the partnership between the Alamance Junior Tennis Foundation is only growing stronger as we seek to continue that legacy with the Burlington Tennis Center. So in recognition of this dynamic and growing partnership, we would like to thank the Burlington Recreation and Parks Department and the Burlington Tennis Center for having a significant impact in Alamance County. As a token of our appreciation this evening, we want to present a $5,000 check to the Burlington Recreation and Parks Department, and specifically to the Burlington Tennis Center, to continue their impact on junior tennis in Alamance County. I'm asking Jim, Tony, if you would come up and take a picture with us?
Let's get the mayor to do that.
Tony, come on up. So you've got board members with you. Raise your hand so everybody knows. Well, first of all, the community's support of any endeavor is extremely important, but this one has legacy, and it's neat hearing the story, and we're very appreciative of the donation, but the support and having you guys here as well, so y'all come down.
Get closer. There we go.
Thank you.
On behalf of the Recreation Department, I just want to show my appreciation and compliment the Alamance Junior Tennis Foundation. They've been partners to us for a long, long time, and he mentioned some really, really faithful names, Jim Tony, wonderful person, knew him well for many years, and he was a tireless worker and did a lot of great things. It would not take any recognition, right, Harold? Never wanted to be recognized in anything he did. And a lot of the others, F.D. Hornaday and some of the others you mentioned, very instrumental in helping us get the tennis center kicked off right, and still supporting it to today. So we appreciate everything that you do for tennis. Tennis is a really popular sport in Burlington, Alamance County, and the Junior Tennis Foundation put that middle school program together. They didn't have a tennis program in the middle school, so that's been a great achievement, and not only did they fund it, found coaches for all the teams, and so it really started a program that was needed to feed the high school teams and get kids involved in playing tennis at an early age. So thank you very much, everything y'all do, and thank you to the council for supporting tennis in the city abroad.
Thank you, Tony. On the agenda, this is an action item, so I guess we need to formally accept this. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We appreciate your support and appreciate you all being here. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Code of Ethics, disclosing any conflicts of interest. At this time, we'll recognize City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Thank you. Members of council, it's my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. Ask that there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
None. Thank you. Next item is approval of minutes. September 19th, 2022 work session. September 20th, 2022 city council meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye. Any opposed? Next item is the adoption of the agenda.
If we adopt the agenda.
Thank you. Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye. Any opposed? Next item is consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about these items, please let us know. Item A, to approve a request from the Burlington Downtown Corporation for temporary closure of a portion of City Lot Number One at the corner of Spring Street and Front Street from mid-November 2022 to early January 2023 during the downtown holiday decoration installation. Item B, to approve the reclassification of two maintenance worker positions, Level 16, to service technician positions, Level 18, in the Public Works Equipment Services Division, effective upon city council approval. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
May I make a motion to approve the items listed on the agenda, please?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye. Any opposed? Our next item is our public hearings. Public hearing number one. A public hearing has been scheduled to consider adopting a resolution for an economic development incentives agreement for Project Freeze Pop and adopt a resolution in support of a building reuse grant application to the North Carolina Department of Commerce. At this time, we'll recognize Economic Development Director Peter Bishop.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, with respect to this agenda item, we would like to ask that we look wrong at this time. We thought we were going to be able to release the name of the company instead of saying Project Freeze Pop. However, the company is still going through the state incentive process, and they're unwilling to release the name of the company. So we would like to ask that this item be pulled until they go through the process and we're able to announce who that company is.
May I make a motion to remove this from the agenda and let it come back in due course?
Can I recommend that you continue to answer, so you don't have to re-advertise?
We're not sure when, that they'll be through the state incentive process, so...
Are we dependent upon state notification? Is that what it is? Okay. So we just have to go through the...
Do you want to continue it for the next meeting? You can continue it again.
What's councils?
Continue. Say you want to re-advertise?
It's not possible to be back in that meeting.
Well, if we re-advertise, we could re-advertise with the name of the company. I think that's part of the concern that was there. So I would probably make the suggestion that we're, in how the company, they were looking for a resolution hopefully by the end of the year. So I think we do have plenty of time, but we could do that in there, that might as well.
About the first meeting in December?
Not sure, we think, but just not sure.
As a child, what the best thing to do, Mayor, would be to pull it and let it come back. You had to re-advertise.
Okay. So that was in form of a motion?
Correct.
Yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye. Any opposed? Mr. Boni, you indicated that you wanted to make a comment on this item.
If I could, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely.
With regard to both items, one and two, on your public hearings. And I wanted to come before you, Mr. Mayor and council members, to express concerns about the lack of transparency in the city's current methodology in dealing with incentives agreements. Unfortunately, the city manager has just provided one more illustration of that lack of transparency. You have on tonight's agenda two incentive proposals, although I understand and was expecting the one to be postponed. But, Mr. Mayor and council members, it hardly seems fair to the public in Burlington that they cannot know what exactly which company or companies are being considered for expenditure of their tax dollars unless and until they show up at one of these public hearings. In fact, we learned the identity of one of the companies only this afternoon at 4:23, just two and a half hours before this meeting, when the city manager called back after I'd raised concerns with him earlier in the afternoon over the lack of information available on the proposals that are on your agenda tonight. Now, Mr. Mayor, I recognize there's an inherent tension between our newspaper wanting to know everything right away, all the time, and that's pretty true of any media. And the economic developer and the city's desire to want to keep everything top secret until the last possible moment. But I want to suggest, Mr. Mayor, that there should be some middle ground that can serve both the city administration's and the public's general interest. In my opinion, you need a different procedure than one which amounts to ambushing the public at a hearing like this tonight, in which they do not know the amount, the company, or anything about it until the meeting. And that's not good public policy, in my opinion. I mentioned to the city manager during our afternoon conversation that I'll urge the council to adopt a similar structure to the one adopted by the county commissioner several years ago, in fact, when Mr. Hunkett was, I think, the county manager. It has achieved, I would suggest, a relatively happy medium, a blending, I would suggest, of these competing interests. That methodology sets the subsequent public hearing on incentive requests at a public meeting, when the incentive package to a named company, the name of the company is announced and identified at the time of the meeting, but the details of the incentive package, the amount of money being planned to be awarded, the terms, how many years, what employment parameters, all those kind of details are allowed to be postponed until the following week, at which time they're announced, which also allows one week between the announcement and the public hearing. So similar to your schedule, in which you meet every two weeks, the commissioners have the announcement at one meeting of the company. The following week, they announce the details of the package, and then the second full week is when they have the hearing on the proposals. In the cases before you tonight, the identity of one company is relatively easy to conjure up, oddly enough, the one you've postponed for one in secrecy. Project Freeze Pop, which by reference to the number-one product of one of our homegrown companies, Alamance Foods, is fairly obvious, not too good a secret in that particular little incentive name. And it turns out, the second one, which you'll come to in a minute, that the initials WKR are, as it turns out, the company's actual name, although that was nowhere indicated in anything previously. The secrecy around these two particular incentives is particularly unusual. As I mentioned, the first one is, both by its name, Project Freeze Pop, and by the address, which is included in the information, which anybody looks up is going to see, it's Alamance Foods Headquarters on Cedar Press Drive. There's just no need to have all this secrecy around it. Another curious dimension in that particular one is the citation of a quote "building reuse grant" for a project that, according to your agenda packet, talks about having new construction. I don't quite understand how new construction to 1,000 square feet amounts to a reuse. And the second one, that you're going to come to tonight, the proposal apparently is to clothe a spec building in secrecy. And yet, it's very clear, unclear to me, how in the world you're going to be able to have any guarantee of a payback period, an employment result, or anything, when the whole thing from the outset is a contingent project. And in fact, I noticed in the announcement, there is no indication of any employment impact, which I was under the impression was the total point of having these incentive packages. So again, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I would urge that you come up with a procedure that allows a more transparent consideration of these, one that, you know, we'd like to know as soon as y'all start talking, but we know that's not going to happen. But once it's been decided and the decision is made to move ahead with the request, we believe that information should be made known. That's my concern and my request.
Thank you. Tom, we greatly appreciate the stewardship of our press, and contrary to maybe popular belief, it doesn't bother us. We're glad you're here. And with regards to transparency, it's truly been, as long as I've been a member of this council, I've been extremely proud of the fact that we do attempt to be extremely transparent in everything we do. Economic development is a sensitive matter when you're dealing with the state, you're dealing with taxpayers, you're dealing with the businesses that are asking for incentives, and using your own words, it is particularly unusual, and sometimes in context. But it's a delicate balancing act, and your words do not fall on deaf ears. Thank you for your comments. Moving on to item number two. A public hearing has been scheduled to consider adopting a resolution for an economic development incentives agreement for Project WKR. At this time, we'll recognize Economic Development Director Peter Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of council. I'm here before you to speak about Project WKR Burlington, which in fact is the name of the company, the LLC that's registered with the Secretary of State's office. This project does represent a speculative building. The WKR Burlington associates are with us in the crowd today. Mr. Brian Dennisar and Mr. Don Comer are here, and they are available to answer any questions as I go through this presentation. But as I mentioned, this project involves building a 100,000-square-foot speculative industrial building on White Skittle Road, squeezed between the quality equipment property and the Sheets distribution facility there. The Alamance County Tax Assessor has provided an estimate of $12 million for the value of this speculative property. This does not involve job creation or personal property investment. That is going to be the responsibility of a future tenant, that we will work in partnership with the developers to recruit. And the local development team, as I mentioned, they also operate a construction company, and they feel very bullish on the Burlington market, both now and into the future. On the map here in front of you, you'll see a location of this site. This site is approximately 12.6 acres. It's situated there on the McCrory Holt Farm, adjacent to Sheets, as I referenced. And on this slide, you will see a site drawing or rendering of what the property will look like from above, with the sections there built out, with parking and stormwater, et cetera, there on the property. And then this slide shows a rendering of what this building will look like. It will be a tilt-up concrete facility with a steel frame and a flat roof, with, you know, an entryway, and of course, you know, truck traffic for both sides. A high-clear height or clear-span building, which means above 30 feet, and typically in the industrial market, that's what most new tenants and prospects are looking for. That allows them the flexibility to have rack-stack storage in the building and can accommodate both manufacturing, warehousing, and other types of uses. So a very flexible building that could work for a lot of prospective tenants. So due to the limiting nature of the lack of job creation, really, and personal property investment, because this is speculative property, the incentives that are offered are scaled to sort of meet what that investment is. So what the city is looking to offer and to assist in getting this property up and constructed is a $250,000 site development, grading, and clearing incentive to the company, and waiving development fees up to $150,000 for a total maximum value of $400,000. And I say maximum value because this is dependent on the tax assessor's assessment of the property, and then we work a calculation backwards from that assessment. But the maximum value of $400,000, based on our understanding. And why is this project a positive for the city of Burlington? Well, it does return, a positive return on investment after five years of construction of the property, so five tax years after it is constructed, we will see a break-even point with the city's investment. As I mentioned before, this would be a high-clear height and ready-to-occupy industrial space. If you look around in our marketplace specifically, there aren't a lot of those there, and in the last two years, basically every available building has been sold, leased, or occupied by a business, so there's really not a lot of product or buildings available on the market to get new projects here. So this is something that will be very good for us to have, to recruit somebody into. But even more than that, speculative buildings really are the best advertising tool you can have, because what it shows to a company looking in the area is that you do have modern industrial space available, you have developers willing to build that space on spec, and typically what happens, even if a company is not interested in a building, when they see this, it's like its own advertisement, and they say, "Well, if you can do that, can you do what I want on this lot next door, on this lot over here?" So it shows the capability, it shows the ability of the market and of the partners, and it usually leads to a project when you have a speculative building. And finally, this partnership with the developer, again, shows that we're actively working to create more industrial product. We recognize that this is important for us to recruit more companies and get more job creation in the city, so all in all, a great sign for our economic development potential in future, and we feel very confident based on the projects that are coming from our own leads and from state obtained leads. There are so many of them, we feel very confident that we'll be able to get a project in this building very soon. So with that, I'll end my presentation. Would offer your questions to myself or to Mr. Dennisar and Mr. Comer.
Thank you, Peter. Any questions concerning this project? Okay, this is a public hearing. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comments. Is there anyone on this other end that would like to speak on this item? Is there anyone on this side that would like to speak on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I don't want to rehash the past. My question, I guess, is on the five-year payback. Would you please outline exactly how the city's going to recover the $400,000?
Yes, the building at an approximate value of $12 million is around $72,000 to $73,000 per year in taxable value, and after the fifth year, that, you know, doing some multiplication will get you past $400,000.
Mr. Mayor, that's good, I guess, but the question I would add is why the city would involve itself in this particular project and no other? There are many spec buildings in various cities across the county, not all in Burlington, but I don't understand why the city would have any particular interest in investing in this, rather than just let the private enterprise invest, and presumably, if it's a good project, and they've got tenants either in the rooms, or possible, they'd be able to rent it out quite quickly. And then the city would actually have a good return on it, on just having them here, without having to have any outlay. And then this slide shows a rendering of what this building will look like. It will be a tilt-up concrete facility with a steel frame and a flat roof with, you know, an entryway and of course, you know, truck traffic for both sides. A high-clear height or clear-span building, which means above 30 feet. And typically, in the industrial market, that's what most new tenants and prospects are looking for. That allows them the flexibility to have rack-stack storage in the building and can accommodate both manufacturing, warehousing, and other types of uses. So a very flexible building that could work for a lot of prospective tenants. So due to the limiting nature of the lack of job creation, really, and personal property investment, because this is speculative property, the incentives that are offered are scaled to sort of meet what that investment is. So what the city is looking to offer and to assist and get this property up and constructed is a $250,000 site development, grading, and clearing incentive to the company and waiving development fees up to $150,000 for a total maximum value of $400,000. And I say maximum value because this is dependent on the tax assessor's assessment of the property, and then we work a calculation backwards from that assessment. But the maximum value of $400,000, based on our understanding. And why is this project a positive for the city of Burlington? Well, it does return, a positive return on investment after five years of construction of the property. So five tax years after it is constructed, we will see a break-even point with the city's investment. As I mentioned before, this would be a high-clear height and ready-to-occupy industrial space. If you look around in our marketplace specifically, there aren't a lot of those there. And in the last two years, basically, every available building has been sold, leased, or occupied by a business. So there's really not a lot of product or buildings available on the market to get new projects here. So this is something that will be very good for us to have, to recruit somebody into. But even more than that, speculative buildings really are the best advertising tool you can have because what it shows to a company looking in the area is that you do have modern industrial space available. You have developers willing to build that space on spec. And typically, what happens, even if a company is not interested in a building, when they see this, it's like it's own advertisement. They say, "Well, if you can do that, can you do what I want on this lot next door, on this lot over here?" So it shows the capability, it shows the ability of the market and of the partners, and it usually leads to a project when you have a speculative building. And finally, this partnership with the developer, again, shows that we're actively working to create more industrial product. We recognize that this is important for us to recruit more companies and get more job creation in the city. So all in all, a great sign for our economic development potential in future. And we feel very confident, based on the projects that are coming from our own leads and from state obtained leads. There are so many of them, we feel very confident that we'll be able to get a project in this building very soon. So with that, I'll end my presentation. Would offer your questions to myself or to Mr. Dennisar and Mr. Comer.
Thank you, Peter. Any questions concerning this project? Okay, this is a public hearing. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comments. Is there anyone on this other end that would like to speak on this item? Is there anyone on this side that would like to speak on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I don't want to rehash the past. My question, I guess, is on the five-year payback. Would you please outline exactly how the city's going to recover the $400,000?
Yes, the building at approximate value of $12 million is around $72,000 to $73,000 per year in taxable value. And after the fifth year, that, you know, doing some multiplication, will get you past $400,000.
Mr. Mayor, that's good, I guess. But the question I would add is why the city would involve itself in this particular project and no other? There are many spec buildings in various cities across the county, not all in Burlington. But I don't understand why the city would have any particular interest in investing in this, rather than just let the private enterprise invest. And presumably, if it's a good project and they've got tenants either in the rooms or possible, they'd be able to rent it out quite quickly. And then the city would actually have a good return on it on just having them here, without having to have any outlay.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Any other public comments on this side? Hearing no additional comments, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Sorry, a minute.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, any other questions, or if not, we'll entertain a motion from council? Mr. Mayor, you said that there might be some of the potential owners involved in this here tonight. Did any of them want to speak at all? Mr. Dennisar, would you like to come forward and make any comments on this project?
Hey, Brian Dennisar. I live in Burlington, 4458 Bodylock Drive. I get excited about Burlington because I live here. And the reason we chose Burlington was because we wanted to invest where I live. And I get excited that a community wants to invest in themselves, which is what Burlington is showing by approval tonight. So I think that's what's driving us. Our headquarters of my company is in Raleigh. We have an office that we just opened last month in Burlington with a second office.
Just off the interstate, I think.
Just off the interstate, yes, sir. So we are bullish on Burlington. And I want to do business and provide opportunity where I live. And so that's what motivates us and my partner, Mr. Comer. So we appreciate that consideration tonight. Certainly open to any questions you guys may have for us.
Thank you. When did you open your office in Burlington?
So we signed the lease August 1st. We quickly scrambled and did a renovation in about two and a half weeks, just some paint and carpet. And we started taking phone calls and checking emails, probably the third week of August.
As I asked, I saw the sign right down the interstate. So I knew you guys were there.
Yeah, it's been excellent. So a real dream come true, just to be able to do business where I live and be five minutes from my family and pick the kids up from school. So it's been nice.
Thank you. Any questions from council? The physical address of this property?
There is not currently a physical address.
Is, okay, but can you give me the street names?
Yes, sir. White's Kennel Road is what it fronts and abuts, and it has no other street frontage. But it is bound by the Quality Equipment parcel to the north, to the remainder of the Holt Farm. Actually, the property that Steritech purchased for their life sciences industrial park is to the east. Sheets is to the south, and White's Kennel Road would be to the west.
And is there a project approved across from it? Is there not?
There is. And I just pulled the map back up so you can see the location here. This is Sheets here, Quality Equipment right here, and of course, the remainder of the farm right here. Yes, the city actually won an Economic Development Administration award to extend sewer across White's Kennel Road to the west side of White's Kennel Road to support an expansion of innovative knitting, which will construct a 50,000-square-foot facility for their operation. The developer of that property will also be building two additional 50,000-square-foot buildings.
Any other questions? Not, is there a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion. Thought about this a lot, and we know this is something different for us, but we feel like it's investing in our community and allowing our Economic Development Office to have something to offer. I understand the points of view that have been raised, but I think we're doing right now. So I would like to adopt the resolution for an Economic Development Incentives Agreement to WKR project.
Thank you, Kathy. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Thanks for being here. Item number three. A public hearing has been scheduled to consider a voluntary annexation petition to annex into the city of Burlington one parcel, which is contiguous to the current city limits. The property, 626 West Old Linco Road, is approximately 10 acres in size and is located on the south side of Old West Glenco Road, just east of the intersection with Lakeside Avenue, and consists of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 128108. At this time, we'll recognize our planning director, Jamie Lawson.
Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. So yes, this property is highlighted here, shown in red on the map. It is approximately 10 acres in size. Tax identification 128108. The applicant is seeking water service tied to the existing single-family home. There is no other development associated with this request. So this is a standalone voluntary annexation request within the city's purview for consideration. Considering the property is contiguous to the existing city limits, which is shown in this gray hatch color with the gray outline, and that all departments have reviewed this and indicated that services can be provided to the site. Staff is recommending approval of this annexation. You'll also note that the property immediately to the east was the subject of a rezoning request for high-density residential, which we would also anticipate in the future being considered for annexation as well. So that is staff's recommendation for the annexation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions on this item for Jamie? Okay, this is a public hearing. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comments. Is there anyone on this side that would like to speak on this item? Is there anyone on this side that would like to speak on this item? Hearing done, we'll entertain a motion to close public comments.
Motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on item number three.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt annexation order for 626 West Old Linco Road.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number four. A public hearing has been scheduled to consider a request to rezone property from Medium Density Residential, MDR, to General Business Limited Use, GBLU. The property is located at the terminus of Whitesell Drive, west of the intersection of Whitesell Drive and Huffman Mill Road, addressed as Zero Whitesell Drive, and consisting of Alamance County Tax ID Number 107165. At this time, we'll recognize Jamie Lawson once again.
Good evening again. So yes, this request is for a limited-use rezoning. The property is shown on the map, highlighted here in the teal hatch, per UDO Section 318. The applicant is seeking a general business, limited use for multifamily development only. This map shows the existing medium-density residential zoning district. This request is consistent with the future land use designation, which is shown here as regional commercial. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval at their October 10th meeting. This item was briefed to you at your work session on October 18th. And staff is recommending approval with consistency statement sheet option number one, shown red and bold. Staff is here to answer any questions that you have. And I believe the applicant is also here as well. Yes, they're in the back.
Okay, Mr. Moffett, do you want to step forward?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's a privilege to be before you this evening. My name's Ryan Moffett. I am an attorney at the Vern Law Firm here in Burlington, across the street of 522 South Lexington Avenue. I've got the opportunity to be before you this evening, representing the Lucas Contractors and Developers LLC, who's the applicant in this request. Mr. Darren Lucas is here with me this evening. We're both available to answer any questions you have. Please don't hesitate to interrupt me, or if something I say sparks a question, happy to entertain it or have Mr. Lucas do the same. Mr. Lucas and his company have been before you recently, as recently as May of this year, with the exact same request for two parcels of property. The Whitesell family property just to the east, that was 16 and a half acres. That was also a medium-density residential to general business, limited use, multifamily. That, as I said, is the exact same request we have before you today. And I'll just give you a little background on the Lucas Development entity. They've been in business for a couple of decades now, back into the mid-'90s, and focused their energies and their talents on Class A multifamily products. Judging by their interest in the nearby property and this property, I know that they are very excited to bring their good work to the city of Burlington. Before getting into this request, I would just, for the record, note that that previous request for the 16 and a half acres did also have staff support and was unanimously approved by you as on a unanimous recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. As you always do with these requests, and as you're always reminded when we come before you, I understand you're considering whether this zoning request is going to be consistent with your comprehensive land use plan, first. And second, whether it's going to be reasonable and in the interest of the Burlington community. And I can say unequivocally that this request meets both of those elements. First and foremost, it is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan. Ms. Lawson has noted that before you. The existing zoning is inconsistent. So this action would bring the property within the bounds of and consistent with your land use plan. I would also note that it would also result in a downzoning, given the extent of the limitation on this. If you look at the permitted uses under the existing medium-density residential district, and even the permitted uses in the general business district, which would be consistent with the regional commercial prescription for this property. This request limits it to a single use within all of those districts, and that's multifamily and multifamily only. The reason for that is because of the nature of the area that it's in. It's adjoined by multifamily. It's adjoined and surrounded by other residential uses, other higher-density, future residential uses, and of course, the future exclusively multifamily property that the Lucas has also planned to pursue down the street. And of course, you've got employment centers nearby. And, you know, we all know about the growth and the demand that there is for this type of product. So I want to be short with you this evening. I feel that what we have before you, like what we brought before you in May, checks the boxes, like I said, unequivocally, for approval of this request. Staff has endorsed it. Planning and Zoning Commission has unanimously endorsed it. And we're hopeful that you would follow suit. And of course, if there are any questions or concerns, we would love to hear them and have the opportunity to address them. We appreciate your time, as always. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Mr. Moffett?
I do have a question. I drove out there. If I understand it, there's going to be a property in between the one we already changed and this one. Are there plans to acquire that?
I'm going to let, we're working on it. I think organically, that would be the hope and the expectation.
Any other questions, Mr. Moffett? Thank you.
Thank you all.
This is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open the floor for any additional public comments. Is there anyone from this side of the room that would like to speak on this item? Is there anyone on this side that would like to speak on this item?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Hearing no additional comments. We have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, we'll entertain a motion on item four, as requested.
Mayor, I'll make a motion, but first, Mr. Moffett, I like your term "organically." That was well phrased there. I'll make a motion to approve the request to rezone property from Medium Density Residential, MDR, to General Business, Limited Use, GBLU. The property is located at the terminus of Whitesell Drive, west of the intersection of Whitesell Drive and Huffman Mill Road, addressed as Zero Whitesell Drive, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 107165. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that the future land use map in Section 4 Land Use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to have regional commercial uses. The request is compatible with the adjacent residential and commercial uses. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that. The comprehensive plan calls residential and commercial uses in this area, and the request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area.
Thank you. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number four is approved. Thank you, folks, for being here. We appreciate it. Next item on our agenda is item five. A public hearing has been scheduled to consider a request to rezone property from Light Industrial, LI, to Mixed Use, Limited Use, MXLU. The property is located north of the intersection of Interstate 40 and Maple Avenue, addressed as 2444 Maple Avenue, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 132806. At this time, once again, we'll recognize our planning director, Jamie Lawson.
Good evening again. So this property is shown, highlighted in teal. It is on the east side of Maple Ave. You'll see, let's see here. This is the existing zoning. It is currently light industrial, and the applicant, again, is seeking a limited-use rezoning request to mixed use for specific uses included in your packet, which include multifamily dwellings, hotels or motels, and restaurant indoor and outdoor seating. You'll see from the future land use designation that's shown here in red, this area is designated regional commercial, which is consistent with the request. As for the last item, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval of this request at their October 10th meeting. And you were also briefed on this item on October 18th. Staff is recommending approval of this request as well, consistent with option one in your consistency statement sheet. Staff is here to answer any questions that you have. The applicant, Mr. Longest, as well as Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Is here in the back of the room, in case you have any questions. I think they have a short presentation that they may want to present to you, but happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Jamie? If not, we'll hear from Mr. Longest or Mr. Mitchell?
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to bring up packet information for you.
Sure.
Each have an individual document to review while we go through the presentations. Mr. Mayor, for the record, my name is Frank Longest. I practice law with the law firm of Hope Longest Wall of Burlington.
I practice law with the law firm of Hope Longest Wall of Burlington. We've been a law firm here for over 55 years. We've here for you many times, and it's nice to be here tonight on a project that we are very enthusiastic about. The project is really one that's at our doorstep here in Burlington on Maple Avenue, coming in off the interstate. And as you see from your packet of information, the current use of the property is a Maple Hotel. And what we propose to do is change the rezoning, which will permit that hotel to then be converted into multifamily apartments. It's intended to make 135 multifamily apartments. These apartments would be leased on a yearly basis. The project, if it's consummated, is going to be targeted toward millennials. And we feel like, as you hear from the developer himself, who has flown down from New York to make this presentation tonight to let you know their concern for the project, their enthusiasm for the project, and their expertise in bringing this project about. As you know, this is changing from light industrial, which is kind of unusual zoning for this particular piece of property. But it does have 5.24 acres, does have 200 parking places. And of course, with the motel on it, we would think that the multifamily apartment conversion is a good use, a good use for our community, and a nice presentation to the public as to the doorway into Burlington. The nice thing about it is that the project was not changed too much, as my understanding from the exterior structure of the building. It's already there, but the amenities of the pool and other structures and amenities on the property can be refurbished and brought into play to serve the apartment community. I'd like to introduce to you at this time David Mitchell from New York City, who is a principal in Good Homes. And he can explain what his company does and how they project this project to be beneficial to Burlington. David?
Thank you, Frank. First, I'm very grateful and I'm very excited to be before you. So I'd thank the city council and the city staff for a very, very brief opportunity to tell you a little bit about Good Homes and what we intend to do with the Maple Hotel. We have made a significant corporate commitment to North Carolina. It started really in Fayetteville, where we have 600 units encompassing three projects there. And what I've found is, communities like Burlington, like Fayetteville, really have two challenges. One is to attract new businesses, you heard a matter tonight. And the other is really to keep its young people. Really, the missing piece of that is an algorithm that we hope to fill, which is to provide market-rate accessible housing in very vibrant communities. And so I'm just going to go through our little presentation and be here to answer any questions. I'm not technically proficient, so I don't know if I can really go to the next slide. Okay. Now I'm technically proficient. So Burlington knows its mission. We pick things out from your 2015 plan and your 2019 plan. And really, the plan is really to revitalize and to really use your resources to attract businesses, to create vibrant communities. And we really want to become a partner in that mission. Good Homes' mission is really to create vibrant, exciting communities. We focus really on obsolete hospitality assets hotels. And we put an enormous amount of investment into taking these hotel structures and creating very exciting places to live. We have a long history, and I'll bore you with that at the end of the presentation, of development throughout the United States. And today, this platform that we have is in 15 states. It represents over 23 different communities, and we're growing. As you heard today, what's before you is an approval to change the zoning from light industrial to allow us to take and create 135 multifamily units. They are one bedrooms. Currently, the property has 200 parking spaces. And we intend to really revitalize the existing amenities. And I have a few slides on that that I'd like to go through that. So these are renderings of our one bedrooms and our studio apartments. In the studio apartments and the one bedrooms, we put a kitchen. We completely revamped the entire environment. We have a number of furnished units, but largely, there are unfurnished units. We're seeking a tenant that has, for the most part, W-2 income, that is employed, that is, it's a one-year lease, a minimum of one-year lease. We're taking this property, which is a hotel, which is transient by nature and by definition, really into creating citizens of Burlington to live and to work in Burlington. This next slides are actually some of our units, which are in Warwick, Rhode Island. Warwick's an interesting story. We own the Sheraton, what was a former Sheraton Hotel in Warwick. Warwick is one of the lowest occupancy rates in the country, less than 0.6%. It's 0.67% of occupancy. They have a huge crisis as far as housing, and it's a growing, it's on the Providence border. Here, we have taken the apartments, and we have studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms. And these are actual units in two of the apartments, in two of the homes. These are pictures of what we intend on putting into the property that you know now as the Maple Leaf Hotel. We revitalize the pool, bring in a new landscaping plan, really try to create an outdoor, exciting community with picnic tables and barbecues, put a world-class fitness center, game room, tenant lounges. And a big amenity that most, everyone asks for is tenant storage. And so we are taking what is now the ballroom space and the meeting space and creating tenant storage for that. Somebody who's out doing his daytime profession comes and wants to exchange their tools or exchange their work clothes or any things that they need, these tenant storage will be available to them. A large part of what was the Maple Hotel was the restaurant, cabaret, community space, and that will become a tenant lounge and playroom. And game room will put pool tables and ping pong tables. And in some cases, we've been very successful in putting pinball machines. They seem to be very popular. Our rents, which is a question that usually comes up, range in this particular case of $800 to $900 a month. Again, we're looking for a one-year lease and really looking for a tenant that is living and working in Burlington. This, you know well. I mean, this is something you have what we want, and we hope that we have what you want, which is really to meet the large percentage of the population that lives in and around Burlington. Our focus is an income from $35,000 to $80,000. It represents about 38% of the population of the United States. And as I travel throughout the country, I find this tremendous shortage of this type of housing. And there's two facts that one has to recognize, is that for the rents that we're charging, you cannot build new because there's no return. And so the communities that embrace that really understand that one is reusing existing structures, and that's exactly what we're doing now. And so we hope to meet and to interact with your larger employers and really become a neighbor. We use a third-party management company, Pegasus. Pegasus manages about 44,000 apartments throughout the United States. They're in 12 states right now, about 45 different markets. They have come to Burlington. They've underwritten this for us. Our team has come to Burlington. Our construction, we have an in-house construction department, and they've seen what we have. So we're ready to take this on, and we're very, very excited about it. We're in, as I mentioned, 15 states. We have 23 communities. All of them to date have been a reuse of existing hospitality assets hotels. And we find that, starting with a great structure that had all the amenities, it can be a very attractive use and, in some cases, very comparable to A-type multifamily garden-style apartments because we're putting pool, we have game rooms, we have co-working space. And people like what we do, in particular, our tenants. As I mentioned before, we have a long history in a number of different locations. The team has been involved in over $10 billion of development over the past 15 years. Most of it is in residential. Some of it is in hospitality and industrial. I'm here to take any questions, but I really thank you for your consideration and allowing me the time to actually present to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Any questions?
When things seem too good to be true, I'm afraid to ask any questions.
No, please.
I like the price point. I think that's exactly nailed it, where we need to be, what we're missing in this community. That area could use rejuvenation, moderately. So I think this is a wonderful project.
I think it's the gateway to Burlington. I can come off the highway, and I'm there. For me, it was...
We've had that discussion here before.
It's gateway Burlington.
Any other questions?
If you want to grow it, we've got a pretty good-sized piece of property beside you. It may be available at some point in time.
And in front of it.
Yes.
He's just going to do that organically.
I was going to use the word "organically," but somebody already took it.
Somebody beat you on that.
If this is approved tonight, when could you start?
Well, the process is, as you know, planning, zoning, city council approval. We would be putting in permit set. And so a permit set would probably be 60 days in development, 60, 90. I mean, our construction department's already been here with an outside contractor. I would throw the question back to you, is how quickly could the permit set be approved? We would be able to start the day after it's approved. We get very excited by this, and we have obviously a lot going on in Fayetteville, not so far away. I just drove it today. And our goal is to really build in and around this county and in the Triangle. It makes sense for us, and we're making this commitment to the state of North Carolina. So as soon as... The day after. The answer is the day after the permit set is approved.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council at Duke appreciate your attention. David's come a long way, and thank you for being so considerate to let him speak to you. It's pretty unusual that we get somebody from New York enthusiastic project in Burlington, North Carolina. I also want to point out that this project has not only been favorably approved by the city staff, but we've had kind of preapproval going through what I call a preliminary technical review committee when we first got started. So we know that we can do this project. There are a lot of things the city's going to ask questions about, which is normal. But I think we have those questions under advisement, and we'll address those accordingly. If this gets approved, it does have the blessing unanimously of the P&amp;Z Commission. And I personally, as my dad used to say, it's nice to see a better use for a piece of property than it exists now. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you. And the information that's been provided has been very thorough on this project. And, Mr. Mitchell, we appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into providing us all this information. So thank you. This is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open the floor for any public comments. Anyone on this side of the room like to speak on this item? Especially city staffs, I would guess. Anyone on this side of the room? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, is there any other questions or discussion? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the request to rezone property from light industrial to mixed-use, limited-use. The property is located north of the intersection of Interstate 40 and Maple Avenue, addressed as 2444 Maple Avenue and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 132806. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that the future land use map in Section 4 land use of the comprehensive plan calls this area to have regional commercial uses. The request is compatible with the adjacent residential and commercial uses. The action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for residential and commercial uses in the area. The request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. This motion is approved. We appreciate you all being here, and thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor. I hope everybody can get to the ball again, watch baseball.
There you go.
Tonight. Thank you very much.
It's on the weather, Frank. It's on the weather.
Well, weather's good. Eight or three.
Y'all have a good evening. This concludes our agenda items. At this time, we have public comment period, which we have none. So we'll move on to city council comments. Any city council comments at this time?
I just want to report on the housing. The United Way came and talked to us about, I was a couple weeks ago, and Conrad was in attendance as well as me. And 120 people showed up. So there is... I keep talking about this housing issue, and that clearly shows that a lot of people are concerned about it, especially people trying to find housing for other people. But a lot of information came out, and a lot of people made good... Came up with good ideas. And there are some things, I think, that will move forward in terms of allowing finding ways for people to help people. But there's still a tremendous lack of affordable housing. What people have transitional housing, get people from gone initially. Sorry, my voice is up and down today. But I just wanted to let you know that there's movement afoot, and people are interested in looking at this issue.
Thank you. Any other council comments?
Yes, Mayor, I want to recognize Chief Meben. Chief Meben brought over several firefighters' trucks, the burning home, whatever you call the smokehouse, over to the school several weeks ago. And our kids absolutely loved it. And his staff was perfect, true gentleman with those kids, and made a lot of good friends. So thank you, Chief, for the visit. We appreciate that.
Chief, on a similar note, my daughter was part of an organization that was having a camp, and someone inadvertently pulled the fire alarm. And staff came out, and they ended up being the big hit. So it was very stressful for the person that did it by accident, obviously. But our team made everyone feel comfortable. And obviously, that was not... We didn't want that to happen, but it did. But just the way it was handled was a testament to good leadership and good stewardship in that group.
Tell them the rest of that story, Mayor.
I'm not. I'm not stopping right there.
Okay. Mayor, I'd like to compliment the Burlington Police Department and the water resources. Just up the street from me this past Sunday, my wife called the PD because we thought there was a leak at this house. We thought there was a water leak or something, it was running down the drain. And so she called the PD, and the PD got in touch with, I guess, Bob Patterson's folks. And they were there literally in less than 10 minutes. I mean, the service doesn't get much better than that.
That's right.
And whatever it was, it was resolved, I guess, in an hour or less or something like that. Are you familiar with that?
No, I'm not.
So they handled it without him even knowing. So they handled it without him even knowing. So anyway, I'm tremendously proud of being a part of this organization, and that's, that's the kind of service that this organization provides, and it just makes me feel good. And I, and I just, like I said, I've been a part of this organization a long time, and I like to, I like to report out things like that, because that's just, that's who we are. And thanks to all of you. I certainly appreciate it.
I want to pass some compliments on to what's made to me as a result of the efforts of Public Works after the storm we had. How quick, you know, that came with Friday night, Saturday, but by Monday, you had people getting, already had the debris on the street. You had the first department there a little later than Monday afternoon, not only cleaning the debris up, but then coming back on Tuesday and sweeping the street and washing the street. I'm not sure that a lot of communities get that kind of service. Mr. Smith, that's pretty darn good. I'm glad you're teaching Noel and something now like that.
It's a work in progress.
It is. Been a long time, haven't you, Noel?
Any other council comments?
Help me with the dates. I don't have it written down, Tony. Our Christmas parade is...
Seventeenth.
November 19th.
Nineteenth. I'm glad Councilmember Wal, would you please...
I was sleeping during that part.
Say anything, and we will be meeting again prior to that, but I do want to be sure everybody gets that on their list. And, Tom, it is a pleasure to have you here. We're really appreciative of our local news. Our local news is important. It's important to me. I know it's important to this council, and your comments are important. And I'll assure you that there was no ill intent, and your comments do not fall on deaf ears. But more importantly, Thomas does a wonderful job, and you guys do a wonderful job at keeping our community informed. And on the good side or the bad side of that, information is critical and transparency is. And I love you and appreciate you being here.
And, Tom, I want to bring you into the new world, and thank you for adding sports to the Alamance News.
There you go.
Bob Sutton and what he did, and, gosh, two weeks ago, guys, Tom, the front page was sports. But you can't imagine the number of high school parents that appreciate that. I mean, that's, you cannot imagine the number of high school parents that appreciate that. So thanks for doing that.
Yep. Without a doubt. And one other comment on the WKR item that was before us tonight. Kathy made some comments about there's been a little bit different departure, and it is. But, you know, we're in different times, and we have a lot going on. And Peter, almost seven years, how long you been with us?
Six years, 28.
Okay, six years. And how many times have you had a product?
Very, very.
Any?
Barely even, ready science.
So now we gotta go to work. Now we got to do what we say we're gonna do. So I appreciate all the efforts that's went into that. So, no other council comments. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
We are.
Hey, Tom.